And good evening once again. I'd like to call to order the City of West Bend Common Council meeting for April 3rd. Note that we do have a quorum with all aldermen, president, and county fore. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'll note that we have 11 items on the agenda, the first being our presentations, the first one of which is our National Telecommunicators Week proclamation. If I could have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion and second by Brookwest and Allen. All in favor, so let me say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this proclamation so reads, "Whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas by monitoring police and fire activities by radio and providing them with vital information, public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the point of contact for all city departments after normal business hours and ensure citizens have access to vital municipal services 24 hours a day. And whereas the work of these unseen first responders is invaluable and should be applauded and held in the highest regard all through the year, for without their commitment, devotion, and hard work, countless number of lives and property would be in jeopardy. Now therefore, I, Christopher Jenkins, Mayor of the great city of West Bend, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through the 15th, 2023, as National Telecommunicators Week. And I encourage all citizens to recognize and honor the men and women who service and serve and dedicate dedicated time to keep our community and citizens safe." Let's give them a round of applause. And we'll turn over some brief time to our chief. Welcome, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the time. I know we're excited to welcome a new member of our public safety team, so I'll keep my remarks short. I find it no small irony that the unsung heroes of our department, you don't even know who you were just clapping for, right? They're all in our audience, so dispatcher, please stand up. It's an order. I don't do much. Thank you. Other dispatchers couldn't be here, obviously, because they have to work and prepare to work and be able to prepare to protect and serve our community. I'll keep my remarks short. Our West Bend Police Department dispatchers are crucial and indispensable to our ability to provide the excellence in policing that we pledge to the community. They are kind, compassionate, empathetic, intelligent, committed professionals. We're committed to our mission to protect and serve our community of West Bend. They're truly first responders. They're the first voice our citizens hear when they call for help, and the big help, right? Nobody calls 911 on a good day. They're scared, they're in crisis, they're in pain, they're sick, they're maybe under the influence, they're angry, they're victims of crime and they need help. And our dispatchers are the first kind, calm, compassionate voice they hear. They represent all of us, all of us in the city, and all the services we provide, and they do it exceptionally every day. They're true first-level decision-makers with very limited information gathered from emotional people who are in true need. They make the decisions of what service to provide. They don't call a supervisor, they don't have time for that. They make the decisions of which officers go, how many officers, a community service officer, maybe a call to Department of Public Works, to the Parks Department. They're first-line decision-makers, they're valuable. They are our first-line public servants. In addition to all the calls, and you've heard me talk about this several times, and you heard Chief Moeller talk about this several times, in addition to all of the calls that you would expect a dispatcher makes, they take a lot of other calls. What time's the parade? Why didn't my garbage get picked up? What's a good restaurant to eat at? Does my kid have to go to school today? They take all those calls, and not a one of them ever takes it lightly. They see their role as public servants, and they provide those services that give us the quality of life in West Bend that we all are and should be very proud of. Dispatcher Kim Wendleborn, Dion Hall, Beth McCarthy, Anne Marie Hale, Heather Corning, Amy McCartney, I knew I would do this, Amy McCartney, I'm coming around to it, Taylor Stiff, Ashley Wilson, and Imogen Miller. Nine truly dedicated public servants that I am proud to call partners.
Thank you, Chief, for those kind words. And next up in presentations, we have the oath of office for firefighter/emergency medical technician Tyler Blaze.
Good evening, council. I'd like to introduce to you our newest firefighter. He's the sixth one that we had, this is the first year after you approved our ninth position. Tyler is no different. Tyler has really two cool aspects to his hire. The first one is a guy named Tyler Blaze. What other name could be a firefighter? I knew he wasn't going to be a cop. I knew he wasn't going to go work for DPW. I knew he was going to come work for us. The second one is that Tyler works for a different fire department, and he has a friend working on the West Bend Fire Department, a young guy we hired last year. He called him up today, "I think he should come work in West Bend. It's a really nice department, a lot of really good people, a lot of talented people. I think you're going to like it for West Bend Fire Department." And so by word of mouth, we're getting it out there that, hey, we're a pretty good department, we're pretty proud of that. Tyler, congratulations. Tyler comes to us from Wisconsin Rapids area where he went to high school. He was a hockey player, played hockey at St. Norma College. I'm using notes, Tim. He attended Midstate College, where he got the bug for firefighting and EMS. He transferred down to Waukesha Tech, where he's currently in his paramedic program. Comes to us with fire experience from the Town of Hall Fire Department, Town of Brookfield Fire Department, and Lake Country Fire Rescue. Tonight Tyler's going to be pinned by his dad, and as you can see Tyler, it's a proud firefighting family. Tyler's dad also was on the Town of Hall Fire Department. So we're glad he's here, and he's going to do well, and we're excited for him.
I'm going to have you step to the mic, please. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tyler Blaze.
Haven't been appointed.
Have been appointed.
As firefighter EMT.
As firefighter EMT.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
In the city of West Bend, Washington County.
But have not yet entered upon the duties thereof.
But have not entered upon the duties thereof.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Wisconsin.
And the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
Of the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Just going to say now that we have a firefighter Truckee and a firefighter Blaze, I'm expecting a lot of big things out of our fire department. So thank you all for coming, and thank you for supporting our public safety individuals. You're welcome to stay, we have a long and exciting meeting. But with that, I will recess the common council to finance.
All right, I would like to call the order for the Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one, we have one item on the agenda. Item number one, award contract 2306 Parking Lots Reconstruction, Vine Street, Regner Park. Good evening, Max.
Good evening, thank you. Should I wait a little?
Yeah, we'll wait a second, Max.
Yeah, what would think? Nothing important going on here.
Okay, Max, we'll try it again.
Thank you so much. This item is a recommendation to award a contract for the reconstruction of two parking lots in the city of West Bend. One parking lot, a public parking lot at the corner of Vine Street and Hader Lane, and the parking lot, one parking lot in Regner Park. So we'll do some work with storm sewer, and then we'll remove and replace curb and gutter, check the foundation prior to installing the pavement and restoration of disturbed areas. The contract was bid with two base bids and three alternates. The first base bid was for the Vine Street parking lot, then we had another base bid for the Regner Park South parking lot and the drive leading to it. And then the three alternates were various items in Regner Park as well, a trail, the north parking lot, and a drive loop that loops from Park Avenue. We received a bid on Friday, March 24th, and we received three bids, which are summarized below. And the fourth column on your memo is the pre-bid estimate that we had for this contract. During the bidding period, the contractors reported they were having problems with the chain of supply, they had some delays with electrical items, and so they would probably not be able to complete those electrical items by the contract deadline. So we issued an addendum to have them list exactly which items would be delayed, so that we can provide a delay on the contract for those electrical items. However, the rest of the contract should be constructed within the expected timeframes. We reviewed all the bids, and we reviewed the qualifications of BMCI Construction, who is the low bidder, and based on previous work done for the city, we find that BMCI is capable of completing this contract as described in the contract documents. So previously budgeted ALPA funds and capital improvement funds will be used for this project. The cost of the contract for the improvements in Regner Park came below the available budget during the design, and this is why we had put in some alternates, too. We anticipated that the bids might come up higher, and we would not be able to do everything that we could see needed done, so we had to select some items. We put some alternates in order to be able to bid some of them if needed. But in the end, good news, the bids came out low. So at this point, there were some items, some curb replacement and some pavement restoration that we had left out of the contract, but we took a site visit with the contractor, and they indicated that they could do this work within the timeframe that we have for a Regner Park parking lot, which is June 1st. And they would honor the unit prices they have in their bid to do this work. So we would like to take advantage of those lower prices to do that additional work, and in order to do that, we would require to have higher contingency than usual. So today, I'm also asking that we council would allow a higher contingency in order to have those additional work done. With all that said, we recommend that the board award this contract in the amount of $729,929.75 to BMCI Construction at the unit prices specified in their bid, and also the contingency, which would be approximately 12.3% instead of the five, five and a half that we usually have on construction contracts, for total allocation not to exceed $820,000 for the construction of those parking lots.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions for Max? Alderman, Delmick.
Max, the contingency, my understanding is, but correct me if I'm wrong, is that the contingency is there in case there are unexpected issues with construction. As far as the cost of these electrical components, they're locked in on that, right?
Yes, so that was part of our addendum. When we specifically, because we know how it works, the market changes and the prices go higher, so we specified to the contractors that we would give them the additional time to receive the material. However, if there was a market fluctuation, we would pay only the price in their bid for those items, not, you know, if there's an increase of 10%, you know, six months later, that would not impact the price that we have in our contract.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman, Allen?
Yeah, Max, a couple of things. First, the dates were not in here. You said you talked about the Regner portion being completed by June 30th. What about the Vine Street? Is that also a June 30th completion?
No, so actually, it's June 1st, where we need the Regner Park parking lot completed by June 1st, because after that date, the park will open with a lot of events and the public will come. So we specified in the contract that the contractor needed to work on their Regner Park parking lot first, and complete that by June 1st. And then after that, they will come to the Vine Street parking lot and do that construction in June and July.
Anyone else? Okay, we have motion on four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Max. Be no further business before the Board of Public Works. I adjourn as chair.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Finance Committee for April 3rd. We've got two items on our agenda tonight, the first being a resolution authorizing the issuance of a sale of 3.34 million general obligation promissory notes, and we'll talk to Phil about this one.
Good evening, everyone. Phil Cossen with Ellers. Nice to be back with you. Come with great news. You have two documents in front of you that were handed out prior to the meeting. They are the results of the two different sales that took place this morning. Just kind of back up a step here. If you recall, I was here last month, and at that time, you gave us permission to proceed with two separate debt issues. One is a general obligation note issue, which really financed the city's 2023 capital projects that were included as part of your budget process. That was 3 million, which has really been kind of the normal amount that you have budgeted for normal capital. And then some initial project costs related to tax increment district number 16. That was 250,000. That was financed really over a 10-year period, and I'll get into the details of the sale results in a little bit. The second issue is a general obligation bond issue, and that financed TID 15 projects, and it was really the TID portion of the Main Street reconstruction, and then also a portion of the Riverwalk heading south from the HKS apartment development that is occurring within TID 15. So the bonds financed over the life of the TIFF district, that those two projects, and the notes again, were the, just the normal capital expenditures, plus a little bit of TID 16 funds. So we took bids at 10:30. Prior to taking bids, we did have a rating call with S&amp;P, as we do anytime you go through a debt issuance process, and I was not available for that meeting, but we had another representative from Ellers, and that call went very well. The rating report is in your packet. If you look at the note issued, that rating report from S&amp;P is in here, and it has a lot of detail, but I was just going to highlight a few items real quick. They affirmed the city's AA rating with a stable outlook, and they've outlined why the stable outlook for the AA rating. And on page number 10 of the rating report, you'll see that they've identified really four key areas for the city. The first is strong economic, a strong economy, once concentrated in industrial land use, the city is now primarily residential, with access to the broad and diverse Milwaukee, Waukesha, West Ellis metropolitan statistical area. That's really kind of appeared over the years as part of your rating. Second is strong budgetary performance with historically balanced operating results with predictable revenues and expenditures. We expect the city's reserves and liquidity will remain very strong. That's probably the number one issue when it comes to any kind of rating. It's really that rainy day fund, your fund balance policy, your fund balance, what are you, are you drawing from your fund balance or adding to it in your policy? You have met your policy and exceeded that over the years. Third is adequate debt and contingent liability profile with low overall net debt at less than 3% of the market value, and rapid amortization with fully funded pension. That's a positive, a fully funded pension that a lot of states can't talk about. In Wisconsin, that is reality, and that's viewed very strongly by the credit agencies. And last, strong management with forward-looking financial policies and practices with new long-term financial planning for operations and strong inter-institutional framework. So really outlining kind of the financials of the city, kind of a diverse tax base. They do get into outlooks, what could raise the rating a notch higher, what could lead to a downgrade. I won't read those to you, but you can read those at your leisure. So really, a strong rating report that came out of S&amp;P. So today, again, at 10:30, we took bids, and I did send a memo earlier today also outlining some of the, kind of the nuances of the financing. But you'll notice the resolutions in your packet and the dollar amounts on your agenda are going to be different than what we're asking you to approve. What we're asking you to approve is a lesser amount in both cases, and that's due to the bids that were received. So again, I'll touch on that when we get to it. So the first, the note issued, 3,285, we do provide a summary in the first couple of pages. Noteworthy, you had eight bids that were received, a lot of appetite out there for a fixed income. It's been kind of a moving target for us as far as trying to predict where rates are going to be, but a couple of months ago, if we would have said, you know, you would have received a bid a little over 3% for 10 years, we would have been thrilled. We have seen a little bit of a correction. I have, again, a chart that'll show that in a little bit. But eight bids, again, customarily, we'll see somewhere between four and six bids on a general obligation note issue. So there's a strong appetite out there. On pages three and four of the report are all the bidders that set up. I'm just going to read them, just where they're from, because I think that's kind of noteworthy. Baird was the winning bid here in Milwaukee. They had affiliates 20-strong that essentially they worked with to secure that bid, but then also received bids from Piper Sandler out of Minneapolis, FHN Financial out of Memphis, Northland Securities Minneapolis, TD Securities New York, BOK Financial Securities Milwaukee, Hilltop out of Dallas, and Raymond James out of Memphis. So wide-ranging when it comes to the number of bidders that were set up out there. So those are the bidders. Again, the rate was 3.0289%. And without getting into all the numbers, I'll just kind of give you a quick update that I sent out to the city staff. We were able to downsize the issue by 55,000. So what's on your agenda is a total amount of 3,340,000. We're asking you to approve tonight 3,285,000, and that's due to the bids that were received. Again, some of the issuance costs that we allow came in a little bit less, but it's also a premium bid, and I've talked about premium bids, I know, with you in the past. A premium bid is when the underwriter actually provides you with more funds than you requested, and what you're able to do then is use those funds and either put it into the debt service fund to help pay interest payments, or to use it to reduce the amount of the debt that's being issued. In this case, because you have a pretty firm policy on the amount that you borrow, we are using it to downsize the issue, because you don't need additional funds for the projects that were budgeted. So reducing the downside, or downsides the issue in this case to 3,285,000. We also, again, a portion of it will go to debt service fund as well, that'll pay the interest for 2023 and '24 payments, and also all of the 2016, '23, and '24 payments. And what that's going to enable us to do is actually have this debt issued with no tax impact. It's not going to increase your debt service levy at all. In fact, we're going to see a very slight decrease on your debt service levy as a result of that. And when you take into account the reduction in size of the issue, the deposit, the debt service on, and all those good things, we're able to, we're happy to report that we're 185,000 less than what we came with a projection for this issue. So for the notes, a lot of interest, eight bids, consortium that probably had about 28 bids, and then we also able to, again, come in about 185,000 less principal and interest, which will help TID 16 and the overall debt levy as well. So maybe I'll, Mayor, I'll pause with that and see if there's any questions on the first issue.
Should we get a vote on the first resolution? Yeah, I'm looking for a motion on the first resolution. I can restate that, resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of 3,285,000 general obligation promissory notes. I got a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions for Phil? Go ahead, Mayor.
Just comment quick. I made the comment a couple of months ago that I think a couple of us here, again, we remember the financial state that we were in, you know, not too long ago. So to look at these metrics, the strong economy, the healthy fund balance that we have, the adequate level of debt, I mean, we're definitely, you know, miles from where we were before. And add to all that, obviously, we know it's a hostile market. I was really worried what the rates would come in at, so this is very promising to see that we're, you know, not only in a healthy financial position ourselves and the city, but that the rates that we're getting are pretty competitive, too. So thank you to everybody for their work.
That strong rating report was, was happy to hear that, yeah, exactly. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Go ahead, Phil.
All right, comments on the second issue bill, a bit shorter, same rating report. Don't differentiate between notes and bonds, so it's the same report. Here we took, again, 10:30, we had bids. This is, again, the finance, the portion of Main Street and the River Trail, and we had 10 bids on the bonds, again, representative of really the strong credit of the city. Same winning bid, that is in your packet as well. You can see on pages three, four, and, three and four are all the bids that were received. Again, Baird was the winning bid at 3.6504%. Again, a strong consortium of other bidders that they brought into the deal. Most of the same bidders, one new, I think on there, the Baker Group out of Oklahoma City. I thought there was another one. Can't recall which other, but we had 10 bids on this issue. Here, too, this again is all related to tax increment district number 15. If you recall, there's been a little slight delay in that development. This will help when it comes to kind of overcoming that slight delay that we've seen in the development. Again, 10 bids, true interest rate 3.65%. We had a premium here as well, so we're going to ask, on the resolution, instead of the 4,60,000, we're going to be asking you to approve 3,790,000. asking you to approve 3,790,270,000 less than what was authorized. And in this case, we're 520,180 less principal and interest than what was, we brought forward to you last month. There is one last thing, there is a chart on the back of the notes that kind of gives you a feel for what's happened in the bond market over the last year. And you can kind of see the correction that's occurred in the bond market a little bit since November, December of '22. So this is really reflective of what we're seeing in the bond market at this moment. I'm not going to make any predictions where it's going after this, but it's good news for the city tonight.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and state that second resolution, resolution awarding the sale of 3,790,000 general obligation community development bonds, series 2023B.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion. And did I get a second?
Aye, second.
You seconded, okay. Any discussion or questions for Phil on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much, Bill. Really appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
With no further business before the Finance Committee adjourned by the call of the Chair.
Thank you. And I'll reconvene into County Council and we are on the consent agenda consisting of items three through six.
Second.
Thank you, Kayler and Model. Any questions on these? Hearing none, all those in favor, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We have one agenda item for consideration. It's a resolution instituting street opening permit fees. I know this is brought back to us and we'll have a brief presentation by Max. Welcome, Max.
Thank you. Thank you again. This item is to recommend approval of a resolution to institute new fees for street opening permits. Chapter eight of the municipal code mandates that anyone doing street excavation or any right of way excavation needs to obtain a street opening permit from the Department of Public Works. And there is a fee associated with this permit. Up to about two years ago, those permits were very simple for simple work in the right of way that required very short reviews that were covered by the fee. However, with the booming technology and existing companies wanting to upgrade their entire network and new companies coming to the city to, to install new network, we recently had a presentation by TDS here at council a couple, a couple meetings ago, I believe. Now we're seeing large scale projects that take a lot of time to review and therefore staff believes that it's time to readjust the, the permit fees in order to cover the costs and the resources to do those reviews. Talking with the city attorney and the director of public works, we feel that a system with base, base fee for the permit and after that, a fee that would be calculated on the number of hours spent on the review and the effort spent on the review would be a fair system for this new fee. And therefore we, we recommend that council approve the resolution that is attached to take care of that.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second and I'll open up for any questions. Yes, sir.
I don't know who can answer this. Do we have any other permits that are based on a flat fee plus costs?
Yes.
We do?
Yes, we do. All our public improvement permits from engineering as well as stormwater management permits are built on the same premise. We do have just a fee of 50 or a hundred dollars to start with. And then after that, it's based on the amount of time that staff spends to review the permit. And that's because different projects are more, are more or less complex or involve more or less items that need review. And we want to make it fair for the applicant that everybody's not going to pay the same amount if it doesn't require the same amount of work for the review. So we do have at least those two permits in engineering. I don't know in other departments if we have the same thing, but I imagine probably as well.
So based on what you just said, is that the applicant that's being looked out for in this, in this permitting, this fee structure?
Yes, because if somebody is coming with a street opening permit where it's just going to be like a gas lateral, that's probably going to be
I see.
A quick review. But those new permits that we see coming in cover like entire neighborhoods and wherever they put those underground utilities, we have to do research to check if it's going to conflict with any storm sewer that we have there, water mains, sanitary sewer. So we're looking at extended areas and we have to check into a lot of structures and pipes that are existing. So it requires a different amount of work to do all that.
Is this getting into like really big numbers? This isn't going to run people off from developing in our city, is it?
We haven't done an estimate yet, but we did develop different checklist and different documents for the applicants, which are on the new permit application so that they know exactly. A lot of applicant would send us a plan and doesn't through the curb, doesn't through the sidewalk. So we have developed that checklist for them so they know exactly what we're looking for on the plans in order to cut those review times down as well. So yes, we've made that effort to cut the cost for the applicant as well.
Okay, we just, I just, I worry about us getting too fee heavy.
Yes, we, we don't want to drive people away because of the fee.
Okay.
Alderman Model, I can give you a counter example. The two municipalities that I work for just, you know, dealt with this too. One of them did it per cut and the other one did per foot that was installed on the right of way. Both of those end up with astronomical fees that to me, I don't think is realistic. So it's nice that you're kind of taking a more uniform blank approach to be more inviting to those contractors.
There's, there's also can be a difference in reviewing something in different parts of, I mean, different parts of the city based on what the infrastructure is, based on the density of the lots, based on the, you know, like the old part of town is often not as well documented where everything is and it's harder to locate the stuff first versus a brand new subdivision. So I, I mean, the, as, as the mayor said, the, the alternative is some type of linear by linear foot, which doesn't take that into account. So you can have something that's actually a simple review where you pay thousands of dollars versus something that's an incredibly complex review. This, this tries to pin it on the actual cost and I, I don't believe paying actual cost for review is going to chase away somebody like TDS or the telecoms because they, they understand what's involved.
Okay.
In fact, they bill us for that on the flip side when we ask them to bury utilities. So.
Hold on.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, Max, I'm not going to ask you to answer for Department of Public Works or, or Water and Sewer, but just within the engineering department, are these reviews typically done by your staff or are they done by Conco? In other words, do we end up contracting portions of this?
So up to now, they were done by our staff. So it's funny, the, the simple ones, Emily and I were handling and then we had a new technician, as you know, a couple of years ago, he started last year. And then we had those plans for him to do certain things within the engineering department. And then he ended up spending most of his time doing those reviews because they're so complicated and involved. But now that we're in a transition where that technician has left and we're in the process of trying to find a new one, we discussed, I discussed with Conco Engineering for some of those street opening permits, we may need their help. And that would work the same way as when we do inspection on subdivisions where they will go and do the inspection, invoice the city, we would pay them the amount and then we will invoice the developer in return. So we will, we're probably going to have a hybrid system to start with until we decide what's best and go with that.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, then I'll call for a vote. So goes the favor of the resolution, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes.
Thank you.
And we'll move into our closed session. Entertained a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to State Statute, section 19.85, paragraph 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business, whatever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. This for the sale of lands in TID 12 and developers agreement with tax keys, blah, 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 you see it in front of you.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second and I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Kayler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Aaron?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Dingting?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be going to closed session and we'll reconvene in a little bit. All right, we're going to reconvene from our closed session and we are on a possible action regarding sale of lands within TID 12 and the developers agreement. We'll click up some clarifying language from our attorney and then ask for a motion.
Yep. So for the developers agreement, I would just look to approve the developers agreement with the inclusion of the pro rata increase for the increased number of units. So the pro rata increase for the valuation guarantee and incentive based on those increased number of units on the second parcel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Allen and Model. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you once again for you guys for investing in our great city. And with that, we'll move on to our reports, first being a report by Alderman Kayler regarding the Park and Rec Commission meeting held on 3/23.
Thank you, Mayor. As you stated, we met on 3/23, my last meeting as a member of the Park and Rec Commission. First order of business, we revised fireworks ordinance to match that of the city. So the fireworks and parks ordinance now matches what was in city code, just a clerical deal. And then we approved several special events, the Baird Shred Event for May 12th at Kister Park, Al's Hideout Car Show for May 13th at Regner Park, Fiesta Latina, May 20th at Regner Park. Regner's going to be busy this year as usual. 1840 Beer Garden for May 26th, June 30th, July 28th, August 25th at Riverside, Regner Rocks for May 25th, June 22nd, June 27th. I'm sorry, that should be July 27th and August 24th at Regner. And Hometown Music Concert for July 9th at Regner Park. And we got a report on Lack of Land Conservancy. Their spring, summer programs are about ready to begin. They have a new birding class starting, you can sign up for that. Annual Plant Sale, May 13th from 9 to 1 at the LLC Barn. Nature in the Classroom programming is wrapping up. They have 11 school field trips scheduled for this spring that'll keep them busy. Second Saturday Stewards Volunteer Program runs May to October. Rec Department, we have 700 kids signed up already for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run. Summer registration opens tomorrow for summer programming. Regner will be open, 19 lifeguards currently hired, seven more are in the process, which will give us 26. Ideally, like to see 2022, so we are in great shape at Regner Park. As well as the rest of summer staffing is looking real good. Ryan's got a few positions to fill yet, but overall looking very good. And spring sports are beginning. Excuse me, forestry and parks are currently in the midst of their equipment switch over. Obviously, we think snow is done, so they'll switch over to mowers and stuff like that. They're removing row trees for several different projects, Main Streets, Sylvan Way, a couple other projects. This winter, we were able to prune 1,800 street trees. That is complete for the year. They are fully staffed for the summer. All of their summer help is hired and ready to go. They're in the process of draining the pond and getting ready to refill lot for the opening of Regner and that new lot, which will be done on 6/1. Gondring Park prep work began this week, so they'll get that all open and operational and ready for summer softball season. And then we have the Friends of Regner looking at a new arch tree, arch entry for the Regner Park entrance off of Main Street. And also they're completing some lodge improvements, some repairs on the fireplace and some window and door repairs. And that is it.
Thanks so much. Any questions for Alderman Kayler? Yes, sir.
I just want to thank you, Randy, for your hard work on the lifeguard thing and as well as the Parks Department in general. I know that was a huge concern of the constituency last year and it looks like you guys took care of that. Thank you.
You're welcome. We had a great group of people that worked on that committee with me and thanks to all them for their ideas. And Ryan and Mike and everybody else in Parks has done a great job of recruiting and really putting us together. So I'm happy to say that they accomplished that and Regner will be rocking again this year.
Absolutely.
Good deal.
Anything else? Then we have a report by Alderman Berquist regarding the library board meeting.
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the library board was held on March 21st. The meeting kicked off with the call to order, the approval of the consent agenda and financial reports. We received a presentation from the Greater Milwaukee Foundation concerning their services and possibilities involving the library. The library director's report included an introduction of guests to our meeting. We actually had somebody show up that sat in with us. So Tom, the vice president of the Friends Group and Ian, an intern, decided to come and see what we do, so they joined us in the festivities. Steve's report contained briefings on several building and grounds related items. The roof project was awarded and is scheduled to start the end of the month. As a reminder, the book drop in the back of the building will be closed and a temporary book drop will be placed in the front of the library on Poplar Street. The replacement doors are in and are being painted by our maintenance department as we speak prior to installation. The HVAC pump for boiler number one failed and the system did not switch over to the other boiler like it's designed to do. So building maintenance was called again and saved the day. They switched the pumps around and ordered a new one, which is going to cost us about $2,000. They're hoping for more bids on the camera upgrade project. We received two bids so far and extended the deadline in hopes of receiving more. And finally, we have issues with the stair railings in Patrons Park, which after inspection has a repair price of around $15,000. There will be further discussions on that issue because there are options for dealing with that. Concerning the collection, review of the nonfiction print section has determined that a slowing of the replacement process or weeding, as they say in the biz, is appropriate to allow us to analyze use and prioritize the interests of the community. Also reported was a study done by the Assistant Library Director, Brad Nye, concerning the digital circulation versus print circulation. And since 2012, he went back. Results of his survey or his study show that over the years, print circulation has remained steady while digital circulation has only increased by about 20, 25%. We would have thought that that number would have been higher, you know, more digital uses and stuff, but what the results seem to indicate is the importance of print media and the fact that brick and mortar facilities are still relevant and haven't been rendered obsolete. That's good news if you're in the library business. So the library showcased some local student art projects throughout the month and in partnership with local organizations. And the West Bend Park and Recs Department, our youth department, will be having several programs planned for the fourth annual screen free week. Ah, got it. That's where they have programs that involve different uses of getting away from our screens and computers and doing things that are designed to engage people physically and mentally in stimulating activities beyond the screens. The first week of May will be full of library programs for all ages, all being screen free. The only agenda item that we had for consideration was final approval of the funding for the roof project. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 18th. Check out the library's newsletter, website, Facebook posts for more news and opportunities and we'll see you at the library.
Great job.
Thanks. Questions?
Any questions for Alderman Berquist?
Oh, come on, there's got to be something.
Outstanding.
And I'll open it up for any news, of course. Tomorrow is election day. Our city staff, city clerk's office has been diligent in getting city clerk's office has been diligent in getting that prepared. We have our poll workers ready to go. Don't forget to go vote. If you're not sure where you vote, visit, was it myvote.wi.gov. Got important races on the ballot, referendum, school board, and of course, we got to elect a new mayor. So, make sure you get out and vote and best of luck to all of our candidates. Any other announcements? Then, having no further business for the County Council, I'm sorry, yes?
Yep. Tomorrow being Election Day, the bid board will be meeting, but we won't be meeting here.
Correct.
Because here, people will be voting. So, the bid board meeting is 8:15 at the School District Office at 735 South Main. So, I invite you all to attend.
You got it, Bill.
It's at 8:15.
And the Libyrs Commission will be meeting Wednesday and Sunday.
Correct. During elections, messing everything up. Yes, sir.
Just a reminder, Main Street is now under construction. Ask the public, do your best to continue to support those businesses. Walk the extra block, takes the extra time. But please support those businesses during this difficult couple of months. Thank you.
Amen. Now, having no further business for the County Council, adjourned by the call of the Chair. Have a great night.